Good morning. Being nine AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Ms. Greeno will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tiana, can you call the roll, please?
Pamela Althoff, Carolyn Campbell, Joseph Gotamaller, Terry Greeno, Eric Hendricks, Carl Kaminski, James Kearns, Matthew Kunkel, Teresa Meshes, Lizette Ness, John Reiner, Brian Sager, Michael Shorten, Michael Scala, Larry Smith, Gloria Van Hoff, Tracy Von Bergen, Kelly Wegener, here, Chairman Bueller.
Here. Having quorum will proceed. Good morning. I have a few items to share with you before we review the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting. I'd like to start by sharing the good news that McHenry County will receive three million dollars from the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program to build new sidewalks and shared use paths along both sides of Randall Road in Crystal Lake and Lake in the Hills. When complete, the sidewalks will connect with other nearby bike and pedestrian accommodations. Thank you to the McHenry County Division of Transportation for helping to secure the funding, and congratulations as well to the City of Crystal Lake, the City of McHenry, and the Village of Huntley for also securing ITEP funding for their pedestrian and bicycle transit projects. I'd like to congratulate all of the candidates who won the races in last week's election, and thank all of the people who took the time and made the effort to step forward to run for office, to represent their communities and neighborhoods on our city councils, school boards, park districts, library districts, and other local governments. Thank you as well to our county clerk's office and the election judges who worked to ensure that the election went smoothly. Speaking of congratulations, it was my honor earlier this week to present our Community Development Department's Partner of the Year Award to the Consumer Credit Counseling Service of Northern Illinois. We bestowed the award on CCCS for their invaluable assistance in administering our successful McHenry County Emergency Utility and Rental Assistance Program, which helped more than eight hundred McHenry County households keep up with their rent and utility payments during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Besides CCCS being very deserving of the honor, it was very fitting that the award was presented this week, which the county board designated by proclamation as Community Development Week. This past Monday, our Finance and Audit Committee held a special meeting to review the last of our advanced McHenry County grant applications, consisting of six requests for water and sewer infrastructure improvements from the governments of Cary, Fox River Grove, Wonder Lake, Huntley, Union, and the Northern Moraine Wastewater Reclamation District. The committee made changes to the amounts requested by each entity, and the resolution on the agenda has been updated to reflect those changes. On Wednesday, April fifth, we hosted a workshop with the McHenry County Council of Governments and the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning to learn about the successes we've had with partnering to shared services and resources, and to discuss future opportunities across McHenry County and the Chicago region. The event at Hickory Hall in Crystal Lake was well-attended by leaders from across McHenry County and our state-elected officials, as well as by this county board, and thank you to all of you who came. The day prior, on Tuesday, April fourth, County Administrator Pete Austin and I met with U.S. Rep. Brad Schneider, who came to our offices to discuss our legislative priorities in Washington. Following the two thousand and twenty-two redistricting, Representative Schneider's district now offers or now covers northeastern McHenry County, and the meeting was informative and productive, and Representative Schneider is receptive to our needs. And finally, this morning, it so happens that the day of our next Committee of the Whole meeting, Thursday, May eleventh, also happens to be the day that both the President and the Governor, after more than two years, will allow their respective COVID-nineteen states of emergency to finally expire. I've said many times how proud we should be of how McHenry County rose to face the challenges the pandemic presented, and we created the Advanced McHenry County Program I mentioned earlier, which is investing tens of millions of dollars in pandemic relief funding directly into our communities. We created the weekly resume McHenry County newsletter to help our businesses and our tourism industry learn about the tools that were available to stay afloat, and subsequently recover as the restrictions lifted. With the emergency orders coming to an end, let me be the first to declare that McHenry County has resumed. McHenry County is advancing. It's not just advancing, it's thriving, and at our next Committee of the Whole, we'll unveil how our ongoing campaign will pivot to share our success story with everyone. And that's all I have. And following members' comments and public comment, we'll be receiving two presentations this morning. Historic Preservation Commission Chairman Steve Greeley will present the commission's annual report, with tax bills going in the mail next month. Assessor Robert Ross and Appraiser Director Alex Benitez will be giving us a presentation on the assessment process. Their presentation this time last year was informative and very well-received, and with a lot of new faces on the county board, I thought it prudent to get a refresher. And that's all I have today. Do any members have comments? Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes, Administrative Services Committee is working on a new questionnaire that will be sent out in the next few weeks for the board to evaluate Mr. Austin. So when you see it, please do your best to answer it so that we can have a full response for him on his annual review. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ness?
I was observing the special finance meeting of the board Monday, and I just want to acknowledge those members. I thought they did an incredible job. It's really difficult when you have requests that exceed the money you have available to give. I thought they were thoughtful and deliberate, asked great questions, and I know it was an extra committee meeting for them in their time, and so I just wanted to acknowledge all the work they put into making that happen.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none? Do we have any public comments, Scott? Okay. A public comment is limited to three minutes, at which time the red light will come on in front of me here, and I would ask you to, if you're not finished, to summarize your comments. First up will be Koval Larson, followed by Trent Shellhouse. Shellhouse. Carol?
Carol.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's nice being back in this room. Don was a member of the county board for eight years and served as vice chair for three of those years. So, anyway, I'm going to tell a brief story, and what I'm concerned about is the recommendation of the zoning department for twelve acres up on O'Brien Road. In nineteen sixty-eight, Don bought forty acres with the intent of having beef cattle and building a home, which he did. He raised his five kids. And then about nineteen ninety-one, we were done with the beef cattle, and we decided to make the land more conservation-wise. And so what we did is remove those fences, and we, on the twelve acres that, all right, so there's forty acres, twelve acres was cut off. So what we're concerned about is the twelve acres that's there now. It is zoned farming right now. It is not tillable. It is not suitable for grazing. But what happened in nineteen ninety-two is the Conservation Department, IDNR, Ducks Unlimited, Pheasants Forever, built a birthing dam, and what that blocked was the creek for the Nipper Sink, and controlled the amount of water that was able to flow under the dam into the next piece of property. So the middle section of this property is all flooded and becomes a pond. And then what happened was, on the front part of the property, towards O'Brien Road, we put in one thousand five hundred oak trees, which I helped plant, and about fifty percent of those lived. So if you look at the piece of property, Mr. Austin, are you going to pass that handout out, or?
Put it in all their mailboxes.
Okay, all right. What I've got is the pictured of the property in an aerial photograph that was done in, I believe, two thousand and twenty, and it shows the piece of property blacked off. And if you go from O'Brien Road, which is north, all the way to the south, the front is high and dry, the middle section is very wet, and is the head of the Nipper Sink Creek, which is being controlled, and the back part is all wooded. What we're asking is that one acre up towards O'Brien Road be zoned residential, which would also bring more taxes into the county, but it would allow Trent Shellhouse to build his home there, and it is consistent with what's in the area. Across the street, there are approximately thirty homes that are built and exist there. Next door is where I lived, the twenty-eight acres with the single residence. Then down the road, there's another subdivision. So it's not inconsistent with what is there. The rest of it cannot be developed into housing simply because it can't be developed into housing. Okay, so...
If you could summarize your comments, please.
Okay. The two thousand and twenty land, the two thousand and thirty land use plan for the county causes an environmental resource land, and having Trent living on the property as a steward of this land would be the best outcome. So I'm hoping you will vote for the one acre rezoning residential on these twelve acres. Thank you.
Just to clarify, this is eleven B three on the agenda?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Trent Shellhouse, followed by Thomas Beatstra?
Hello, morning. My name's Trent Shellhouse. My family and I are looking to purchase this twelve acres. We did our due diligence, went to the county planning and development, said we'd like to purchase this, simply to put a house on it. What would be the best course of action? Miss Anna Kutzman looked to the north, saw Nolan Subvision with the thirty-some houses. Said this should be a no-brainer. We shouldn't even have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get this to go past. Two weeks later, I got a letter stating that that was an isolated estate, not to be considered in the reviews, and then proceeding to get voted down by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our, yeah, that was the best, that was all we wanted to do, was just buy the property, put a house on it. This was, I mean, whether rezoned at R1, E1, I had no idea. I was just going off the county's recommendation. If we do get this passed through, the other eleven acres will be kept natural, everything put back into the conservation, either in easement or I'll take care of it myself. My father was on MCCD for a long time, and we have a lot of conservation in our, in our family history, I guess you could say. We're not trying to set precedent. I know this is out of the realm of which you guys are wanting to approve, but it is simply based on what the zoning and planning told me to do. Had I known anything different, we would have went a different route, and they still would have probably denied us, and we'd be sitting in the same spot. But we just wanted a nice, wonderful place with wide-open spaces, where to build a small house on. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thomas Beatstra, followed by Kim Keefe? Pardon me? Oh, okay. Kim Keefe, followed by Alan Plane.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all of you for what you do for the county. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, this is not a new split of the forty acres. This was done in nineteen eighty, and I certainly got the concern, as I'd love to sell all the five-acre pieces that are out there. This is a piece that's special. I want to also point out that we did offer this property for sale to the neighbors first and foremost, before my sign went in the yard, and the neighbors did not want nor could afford the property to kind of tie it back into the forty-acre parcel that's preferred. This property is beautiful. It is unique. It is home to many varieties of frogs, duck, fox, beaver, birds, bats, animals that are really indigenous to this area, and just add to the overall enjoyment and just the ecosystem, which is so important. And when I think about the best use for this property, I understand the commission's goal. I understand their role. I also feel like, at times, the commissions forget that we know it doesn't fit the box for exactly what's allowable. We know that, and we're making a request for them to consider. What we heard at the commission was, this doesn't fit. This isn't what we want. It doesn't fit the rules. We knew that. We knew that. And I think, at times, the commissions forget. They always like to use the word precedent, and they're worried about other people flooding into their commission with other cases of precedent. This piece is like none other, and that's why the commission exists, to consider variations that are allowable, that are appropriate, and that make sense. And in this case, Mr. Shellhouse will utterly take care of this property as it's intended to be cared for, unlike any of the other neighbors, and including additional farming or pasture or anything that just doesn't make sense. I guess the, I'm sure I had one other point. I'd love to take all of my three minutes, so, and rarely don't get cut off. So in that regard, I think the dilemma is, if this doesn't get approved, I go back to marketing this property as recreation only, and I would hate to see this property used as something like a dirt racetrack, motocross, ATV trails, all the things that I get asked to search for, and that kills me. If I was a neighbor on O'Brien Road, I would hate to see this property used in any way other than an adorable home with someone who's going to take care of it. Thank you.
Alan Plane?
Good morning. My name is Alan Plane. Live at sixty-five fourteen Alden Road in Harvard, just down the road from the property in question. I've been friends with Trent and his father for a long time, and I can just see this property not being used for anything else, as been stated already. It's a unique piece of property, and this is a great opportunity to keep another family in McHenry County. And we have enough people fleeing the state as it is. This is a great opportunity to keep somebody right here at home. Well, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Next, we have Steve Greeley with the Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Welcome.
All right. Good morning. I'm Steve Greeley, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, Chairman Bueller, and thank you, Board, for having me here today. Thank you for considering the programs that we bring to you, and our ordinance talks about annually reporting to you all on our activities, so I want to do that. I'm pressing the right arrow. One of our big programs right now is our virtual tour of all of the landmark properties. So we've got twenty-five standing landmarks that we've had, that the board's approved in the county, and what we're doing is, we're going to properties, having video interviews with the people involved, and this was the first one that we did, which is Trout Valley. Some amazing history out of Trout Valley, where the Hertz started Yellow Cab and then Hertz Rental. They were virtually celebrities of that era, where the Kennedys, Joseph Kennedy and John and Robert visited the property. Eleanor Roosevelt was there, Will Rogers. Hertz Junior was married to Myrna Loy, who was a prominent screen actress. They had a Triple Crown Kentucky, you know, Triple Crown horse account fleet from nineteen forty-three, and its sire and its colt were also Kentucky Derby winners. Jimmy John, Leah Todd, owner of Jimmy John Subs, grew up in Trout Valley, and the two structures that we have are the entrance gate and the pool, a beautiful Art Deco pool that they have there. So that video has been edited and is ready to go. The whole county website, I understand, is being revamped, so we're going to be getting it up on the website and promoting it shortly. Another part of what we do, and you all were, of course, instrumental in getting this going again, is our rural survey. So we're governing, we're looking at the unincorporated lands, and so what our survey crew is doing, and you all, with the help of IHPA-funded, the matching grant, is to look at each property in the unincorporated land, determine if it has some historical significance for potential future landmarking. And right now, the survey crew, they've completed Algonquin Township, and they're moving on to Grafton Township. They're going to do Nunda and McHenry Township as well. We're also, of course, a big part of what we do is the landmarking of the structures. The last one we did was pre-pandemic two thousand and nineteen, the Ford School in Lake in the Hills, beautiful renovation that they did to that school. And now pending, we just last week voted to have this board consider the landmarking of the Hatch Catner Farm in Spring Grove. This was the site Fred Hatch invented, the vertical silo, eighteen seventy-three was the first silo in the nation there at the property. It's no longer there. The Society of Agricultural Engineers created a replica there that's at the park in town in Spring Grove and dedicated it. But on the property, it also has a very unique octagon barn from the eighteen seventies as well, another outbuilding from the eighteen seventies. And then in nineteen fifty-seven, the barn that was there at the same site burned down, and these gentlemen in one week rebuilt the barn, and it's still standing today with the beautiful rainbow truss catenary roof style. Another part of what we do is making sure that any of the landmark properties that are in need of repair have those done appropriately within historic standards. So we review those certificates of appropriateness and otherwise guide the owners in making repairs that are necessary. We also have our scenic roads program. We have twelve scenic roads in the county. The last was Alden Road that we dedicated in twenty-one. And we also have a brochure that is at the Naturally McHenry Group and many other places in the county where people can have a map like this that will show them where the roads are and how to get to them. And then we've also done calendars in the past that show them at the different stages of the year, Fleming Road with the flowers blooming that are blooming right now as well. All right. Another program we have is the Heritage Groves Program, an honorary program for property owners who have some of the historic oak groves. This aerial here is pre-settlement and what the oak grove coverage was in the county, and then this is where we're at today. So we've lost a lot of them, and we honor the people who will, are willing to submit their applications for their oak groves. And we have our one oak grove so far, which is at the Harmony Road School, which is also one of our landmarks. So we encourage people to apply for that. And that's all I have. If you have any questions or comments.
Board have any questions? Ms. Van Hoff?
Sure, yes. So the Historic Preservation Commission website, a portion of the county's website, has the listing of those. You can even actually look at any structure that we've surveyed throughout the county. We have each one listed there. You have to go through and find which township, and you can find your property that you're looking for. But we have them all listed there, and you can even see, we have the Ford School downstairs, because we ran out of room on this hall, but right outside the hall, we've got them all. Yeah. Yes, if you or anybody you know wants to contact, the easiest way would probably be to reach Planning and Development, and then they could get that to me.
Yes, if you or anybody you know wants to contact, the easiest way would probably be to reach Planning and Development, and then they could get that to me. I understand that there are some, and we don't have anything specific related to that, but yeah, none of our landmarks, I mean, there's rumors that there possibly was some activity at those properties, but we don't have any confirmation.
Sure. Could you turn your mic on?
Yeah, just having done a lot of work on Underground Railroad, Pamela, I don't know if Pamela Althoff is here, but we did the first Underground Railroad tour in McHenry County in nineteen ninety-three together. We were on the Community Arts Council. So five of the homes that were on our site, at least four of them are, you know, they're on the National Register of Historic Places, and I know that at least three of them, maybe four, are land.
All right. Another program we have is the Heritage Groves Program, an honorary program for property owners who have some of the historic oak groves. This aerial here is pre-settlement and what the oak grove coverage was in the county. And then this is where we're at today. So we've lost a lot of them, and we honor the people who will, are willing to submit their applications for their oak groves. And we have our one oak grove so far, which is at the Harmony Road School, which is also one of our landmarks. So we encourage people to apply for that. And that's all I have. If you have any questions or comments.
Board have any questions? Ms. Badhoff?
Yes, you mentioned that there are ten five sites that are already landmarked. Where can we go and get the list of those sites that are landmarked?
Sure, yes. So the Historic Preservation Commission website, a portion of the county's website, has the listing of those. You can even actually look at any structure that we've surveyed throughout the county. We have each one listed there. You have to go through and find which township, and you could find your property that you're looking for. But we have them all listed there, and you can even see, we have the Ford School downstairs, because we ran out of room on this hall, but right outside the hall, we've got them all. Yeah.
And I just have one more question. So I'm a member of the Illinois Historic Directory. And so if there are sites that we know that should be landmarked, how do we go about giving those sites to you or to your group so that it can be considered for the county to landmark?
Yes, if you or anybody you know wants to contact, the easiest way would probably be to reach Planning and Development, and then they can get that to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you also have like the Underground Railroad sites within the county? I didn't even know that there were any until just recently.
I understand that there are some, and we don't have anything specific related to that, but yeah, none of our landmarks. I mean, there's rumors that there possibly was some activity at those properties, but we don't have any confirmation.
Sure. Could you turn your mic on?
Yeah, just having done a lot of work on Underground Railroads, Pamela, I don't know if Pamela Altough is here, but we did the first Underground Railroad tour in McHenry County in nineteen ninety-three together. We were on the Community Arts Council. So five of the homes that were on our site, at least four of them are, you know, they're on the National Register of Historic Places. And I know that at least three of them, maybe four, are landmarks. So even though you may not recognize that they have the Underground Railroad history, they are listed. So I do have a list of those sites, and we are working on it because there's something going on in the Senate right now for Illinois to be able to take over the National Park Service recognition for Network to Freedom. Because Illinois is fourth on the list, and we know that that's underrated. Number one is Ohio for the number of sites. Number two is Michigan. Three is Indiana. And four is Illinois. And we know, you know, Illinois having like four very important entry sites for freedom seekers, we have many more sites. So we have, you know, our Illinois Historic Commission had worked with legislation downstate. And so we're going to be able to take control of that ourself and get more sites recognized in Illinois, which is a really great thing because if we get that planking, it really feeds into our naturally McHenry County tourism. There's also granting funds available for that as well.
Yes, if we have some of our landmark properties that we have some verification, I think that should be prominent on our website and all of our materials.
Thank you. Next, we have the assessment process presented by Robert Ross and Alex Benitez. Scott, could we move these flags over just a little bit?
Now I can see you. Morning, Chairman. Morning, Board. We have a encore presentation of Alex Benitez's assessment presentation. It's got a lot, a lot of bells and whistles, a lot more than it did back when I started doing these in two thousand and ten. It's a good year for that, too, because it's the first year ever we've, that I can recall since nineteen ninety-two and tax caps occurred, that we're actually in a fallback position where the CPI, allowable CPI for the districts will be five percent. Still, to this day, there's a lot of confusion with taxpayers about assessments and property taxes in Illinois and McHenry. The CPI does control what tax districts are allowed to get. Assessments are about what percentage of the tax pie a taxpayer has to pay. So with that, I will turn it over to Alex Benitez for the presentation. It's a big year because of the CPI and also because it's the eighth year of positive equalization. Thank you.
Okay, well, I don't have to say too much because Bob really just summed a lot of that stuff up into a nice little. And you can really say everything I'm going to say in the next, I don't know how long, you can sum it up with what Bob said. However, property taxes assessments have a lot more nuance, and it's that nuance that's really important for a lot of people to understand what's going on. Okay? And so what I've got here is we're going to talk about two thousand and twenty-two, the equalization factors from last year and the tax bills. Kind of, I'm trying to mitigate some of the fear of the larger factors, and that should become clear why I want to do this in the second portion of mine. Ideally, again, I don't want people to be afraid of the factors, all right? Don't worry about those. I will tell you how to address your assessment notices and look at all that stuff once you get them so that you know what's happening. Can you not hear me?
Could you tell me what CPI stands for?
CPI, Consumer Price Index. Okay, so welcome to the new board members. I'm going to go ahead and just give you a little piece of advice moving forward. I'm going to contradict some of the things that you say. What I'm trying to do is get everyone on the same page so that everyone really understands where we're at, all right? And then from there, I'll start building. If you have a question or if something doesn't make sense to, hold on to, you know, let it go because I will more than likely address it in a subsequent slide, okay? So my hope is that I make a bigger deal about what's happening in assessments and property taxes. And nothing would make me happier than to be Chicken Little and say, hey, we've got nothing to worry about. But I'm going to say, hey, there are some things of concern coming up that I want you to be aware of, but I don't want you to panic. This is how you're going to deal with them, all right? And I'm hoping to mitigate some of that. All right? So, all right. Can everyone hear me or can, all right, so here we go. All right, so I'm going to talk obviously about two thousand and twenty-two first. We're going to talk about assessments. I'm going to break down what assessments actually are. All right, I'll go over the property tax equation that I use to explain assessments. We're going to go over a lot of math. Those of you that don't like math, I'm sorry. There is a lot of math that goes into this process, all right? I've tried to break it down and build example by example so that everyone understands the patterns and what's actually happening, okay? And then I'm actually going to prove to you what I'm saying, all right? I don't want you to just take my word for it. I'm going to prove what I'm saying, all right? Take a short break, and then we're going to talk about two thousand and twenty-three, all right? I'm going to catch my breath, and then we're going to talk about two thousand and twenty-three and the equalization factors for next year because, again, that's important, all right? We'll talk about how everyone's going to deal with those assessment notices and the board review. And then the final thing is I'm going to talk about exemptions because there's been some changes in that in the last year, all right? So anytime I talk about assessments, I always break it down to something everyone can relate to. Everyone can, if you can go out to dinner with five friends, you can understand property taxes, all right? Because everything that's done is very similar. What you do instinctively is exactly what's happening with your property tax bill. There are five of us at dinner. We all order the same special and a drink. The total, including the tip, is a hundred dollars. How much do we each pay? Some people are thinking it, twenty dollars, right? Twenty dollars. Everyone knows it. It's right there, bam. Well, how'd you do that so fast? Well, divided by five, right? That's a good answer. It's a right answer, but I'm going to say there's a more descriptive answer. There is a better answer, something that actually shows something that you skipped, about one hundred times one-fifth. The step that you skipped is the assessment. You all instinctively assessed every meal at a value of one. And since there's five, they're each worth one-fifth of the total of one hundred dollars, right? Equalling twenty dollars, right? So a lot of you are thinking, okay, well, that's great for a restaurant bill. When I go out with my friends, oh, how does that have to do with government and taxes? Well, here we go. That one hundred dollar bill, that's the levy amount. That one is an assessment, like I said. That five is the total of those assessments, and that twenty dollars is the tax bill. It correlates. Now, some of you don't like seeing it this way. You've never seen it this way. I, it's some newfangled math. No, it's not. I'm going to fix that for you. I'm going to move that down there. And what is the levy divided by the total assessment? Tax rate, okay? So these are the three components that go into, the three main base components that go into your property taxes, all right? Levy times the assessment divided by the total assessment equal the tax bill. We work in this box. We live in this box. We lose sleep over things in this box, okay? It takes us over a year to get through everything in this box, all right? If there's a problem with something in this box, we can fix it, or there's a mechanism for you to request us to fix it, okay? We're busy doing this. We have no input, no interest in understanding what's going on with the levy process, okay? We might be aware of this because we are the tax people. That's what people associate, and we'll wear that. We'll explain that. So we might be aware of what everyone's doing, but we also have no control over it, all right? If we have no control over the levy amount, and if your assessment is correct, do we really have any control over your tax bill? Not really. As long as what our portion is correct, we don't control that. And I can't tell you how angry people get when we tell them that. Is your assessment correct? Yes. Then I can't do anything about it. Well, we want to complain. I know, and I'll listen. We'll listen. We always do because we, it's part of our, what we have to do, all right? So we'll do it, but understand that we, at the end of the day, have minimal control over the tax bill once the assessment is established to be correct. So what is an assessment, all right? This is where I break it down to what it actually is at its core. All right, I'm going to go back to the restaurant bill, and I'm going to go back to the restaurant bill several times. The assessment is that one-fifth, right? We are applying a number or a value to a specific situation, all right? And it's something, like I said a little while ago, we all do instinctively. Look at these images, all right? You're all already reacting to them, right? Some of you are smiling, some of you are laughing, some of you are already grating, oh, I want this one. So you're already doing it, something we all do. So I'm going to bring your attention to the black Australian, okay? On a scale, I'm going to get more specific, on a scale of one to ten, one being ugly or a dog you don't want, ten being the best dog that, in, of any kind of dog you would want, rank this dog for me. I've heard ten, my favorite dog. I've heard nine, eight. Everything is, is high, is something as low as a six. But the general consensus when I show this image is nine. Anyone have an issue with that? No, nine? Okay. You want, it's going to be high. All right, I'm going to change the scale on you. How about on a scale of one to twenty? And you want to stay consistent, right? You're very comfortable with this nine. You just said you're comfortable with the nine. Eighteen, right? How about on a scale of one to one hundred? Should be ninety, right? Scale factor changed by ten, should be ninety, right? Does anyone have an issue with this? No? You're all okay with this? It's good logic? Then I just explained equalization to you. That factor every year is the same thing. We are changing the scale at which we have to assess, right? I mean, a lot of people think, a lot of people think that we drive and are asking for more money, or we're increasing assessments because we need more money. We're just adjusting the scale. That's all we are doing, whether it's two percent, five percent, six percent, eleven percent. It's going to be, we're just changing the scale. That's all we're doing, all right? So let's talk about why we need to do this, all right? Why do we do this? All right, so we're going to talk about the relative effect of changing the scale and why we have to do this, all right? Out of a group of five friends at dinner, is everyone going to get the special? No. You always have at least one or two friends that are going to be special, right? One's going to be, get something extra, and one's going to be on a diet or is a little bit on the cheap side, right? So you have to, you need a numbering system that will take those situations into effect, right? Well, why don't we just change the scale? Instead of five down there, I'm going to make it fifteen, all right? What do we do to the top number? We have to change that by a factor of three, right? Are any of you calling me up and calling me irresponsible? If you see me do this, if you're one of these friends and you see that I increased your assessment by two hundred percent, are you calling me irresponsible? Are you telling me I'm the reason you're leaving the state? Oh, I'm sorry, you're not coming back to dinner with us? No, right? Because you see the math. You see that you're still only going to be paying twenty dollars, right? But what this allows us to do is that friend that got that extra drink or side or the extra beer, we can change that assessment to a four. What does that mean he's going to pay? Twenty-six dollars. That friend that gets the salad and a water, we can be fair and change his assessment to a two. How much is he paying? Thirteen dollars, thirty-three cents, right? The system that we all work on with property taxes is designed to be fair without being exact. Very similar to how all you distribute bills when you go out to restaurants, right? It's the same type of idea. Same thing's happening, all right? And there are some built-in safeguards that I'm going to address a little later that kind of show you how the system intentionally is designed to be conservative, okay? End of the day, fair because we can't be exact. Okay, this is where I'm going to get into the math, all right? Stick with me. I'm going to build with the examples, all right? Because we're going to be talking about two thousand and twenty-two tax bills, all right? Those are the ones that are coming out now or very shortly, all right? I'm going to talk about how the effect of the CPI that somebody already asked a question on, all right? So I'm building. Here we go. So using this equation now that you should all say, yeah, that's actually a really good way of doing it because you can see what's happening. Let's say year over year, from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, the levy stays the same, all right? And last year, our average factor was about eight, right? So the assessment went up eight, the total assessment went up eight, all right? What's the tax bill more than likely going to be? Do. It's more than likely to stay the same, just like that restaurant example for the people with the specials, right? All right, but here's the first nuance. Some properties cannot absorb an eight percent increase. They go higher than they're supposed to be, and they file appeals at our board review, and they get reductions. Since the top part, I'm sorry, since the bottom part is just a summation of the top, what happens to that lower number? It goes down, right? What happens to the tax bill when that happens? That goes up, okay? So that's the pattern. That's the math that's involved, okay? We're going to talk about two neighbors. Now I'm going to start getting more realistic as well, all right? Let's say a levy increases two percent. Last year, assessments increased eight percent. We just talked about how this is a little lower, it's at seven point nine nine percent. So what's going to happen to the tax bill? Going to go up to two point zero one percent, right? You see what's responsible for what in that increase, okay? Neighbor two, let's talk about neighbor two. Levy, levy's the same amount. They're in the same districts, two percent. His assessment goes up eight percent. However, he knows that that's too high. He files an appeal. He still gets an increase over the last year, but he does get a reduction. So his increase over the prior year is going to be three percent, all right? With this number down here at seven, what's going to happen to his tax bill? It's going to go down two point seven percent. So that reduction offsets the levy increase, and he's going to gain a reduction. Do you see how this balance between assessments works, okay? Trick question. And I'm telling you in advance, this is a trick question, all right? Let's say that you, as a county board, have the ability to say, Mr. Ross, you're not equalizing anyone this year, zero percent, right? Zero there, zero there. All right, we need to give our people a break. Okay, we do it. How many of you are celebrating? Yay, you're blowing off fireworks, right? Everyone feels we did something good there, right? But the levies can increase five percent, as Bob indicated. What's going to happen to the tax bill? Still going to go up five percent, right? That's the impact of both those components, both those sides of that equation, all right? Again, going to get more realistic now. Levy amounts could potentially have increased five percent for the tax bills that are going out, right? Last year, eight point six percent was our actual average, all right? Eight point six percent up top. Now here's the last level, oh, I'm sorry. So if this were to hold up, you can expect a bill going out with a five percent increase, right? But here's another level of nuance. Let's assume we're in Woodstock, this district's in Woodstock. Woodstock is made up of several townships, several other municipalities, all right? Woodstock has Seneca Township, which is the eight point six percent. It has Greenwood Township, which is seven point four percent, Door Township, seven point zero three percent, and Heartland Township, eleven point four four percent. All those get added up. They get increased by those percentages and then added up. Inevitably, the math mean is going to come in somewhere in the middle there, right? It normally tends to, towards those higher values of the bigger townships of Door and Greenwood, all right? So it's going to be somewhere in the middle there. What's likely to be experienced in terms of a tax bill in this township? Probably six point zero seven percent. So you see what's responsible, five percent, and then one, one point zero seven percent from the assessment change, that in, that burden, that shift of burden that happens down here. Now, for those of you that are thinking that's not fair, this changes year over year. Several years, Heartland, the one that's the highest this year, was actually lower, so this balances out over time, okay? So that, even though there is a burden shift this year in this fashion for those that are higher, last year it was higher, the opposite way. It balances, okay? That's the important difference when it comes to assessments, okay? Anyone doubt what I'm saying, okay? Does it make sense? It makes sense, but now I'm going to prove it to you, all right? County Clerk has some great information on the website, all right? Tax extension. This is where you're going to find the report I'm going to show you, all right? Right here, there is a tax computation, all report. This report is right here, and I put the, those three components of the rate. And I put the, those three components of the rate levy and total assessment right there for you. I've highlighted in 2021, the net taxable amount was 9.5 billion, right? The levy amounts for the county, and I am talking about McHenry County, what your, our jurisdiction, was 70 million, yielding a tax rate of 7.7364 rate, right? Let's take a look at 2022. You see how we equalized at a level of about 8%? So the assessments increased to 10, 10.2 billion. We did ask for a little bit more money, a little over 2%, I believe. 71 million, yielding a tax rate of .6981. I'm going to show you my tax bill. Here's my tax bill for the bill that's coming out. I'm going to sum these two. Look familiar, .6981? Same number. So it matches, there's the calculation, there's your proof. What did my tax bill do? Increased $13 and then went down a couple cents on the pensions. Is that significant? I experienced a whole 7% assessment increase last year. Did everything stay pretty consistent? It stayed the same. So it's showing you that when we increase just by the equalization factor, you will more than likely see some consistency within your tax bill. Unfortunately, that consistency doesn't go to every levying district, all right? You're going to see that while it was only $13 here, some others in your tax bill are different. What's the reason for that? I'll let you answer that yourself. Okay. So this ends my discussion on 2022 tax bill. So take a look at that, see what's happening. The large increases from last year, your inactivity didn't really cause much shift, okay? Be aware of that. Don't be afraid of the equalization factor until I tell you to, okay? All right, and that might be coming up in the next section, all right? Does anyone jot down any notes? Because again, I am separating these two things, two distinct years. Okay, I'll move on, all right? The reason I gave you that little teaser is because welcome to the 2023 general assessment year. Also known as a quadrennial. That's what this year is. Okay, 2023 assessments payable next year. All right? Remember this example where we had to revalue a meal because they got something more? That's what we're charged to do in quadrennials. We are supposed to go look at properties and see what's happening with them, okay? Whether they got a little more than we anticipated, they stayed the same, or they're due a reduction, which believe it or not, we do reduce some, you don't hear about them. But we are supposed to level things out. This person up here has been getting this extra benefit to his meal for a month, two months. And you finally say, hey, enough. You know, we probably need to relook at your bill. Is it a good excuse for him to say, well, you haven't done anything before? You know, why are you changing me now? No, or my property hasn't changed. We just might not have been aware of it, all right? You are, there is a mechanism for you to self-report changes. How many of you self-report? Probably very few, right? Well, there are times when you can and you do self-report. When is that? When you take out permits, all right? How many of you take out permits? Adam? What's our permit rate? Just teasing. Permits, they're important. They're important not only for them, for that aspect, but from our aspect, we need to be aware, made aware. If we don't know what's going on with your property, or if we get a permit and they're not sent to us, we're unaware. So that means that we have to make a change when we become aware of it, all right? So that's what's happening this year as well. Okay? The unusual thing is that the factors are going to be much larger than we've ever, than we've seen. 7%, 8%. They were, those were high last year and we've seen those in some areas. This next year, I think it's going to be an average of 11%. All right, so if there is a huge increase in the lower number, something that's unusual that could create panic, that could cause alarm because people think that we drive levies. We, my assessment increased, you guys are getting more money. Obviously, that's not the case, all right? So there is going to be a little push and pull on what's going to be happening. And we're going to talk about specifically what is going to be happening so that you can even tell your constituents what to do, all right? So why is it going to be so high? Because a lot of people are nervous for this very reason. Everyone knows that property values have gone up and they all think that there's going to be a corresponding increase to their tax bill because values are so high. This is market value. Our assessments are designed to be conservative and go along this lower line, all right? I'm not going to get into the nuance of these two, but just understand that this is the, these are the curves that we need to go to. What do you see or notice about? What do you notice about this? It's, these two are starting, the market value is getting away from the assessments, right? Well, we have to adjust that. Now, this is where we have to be legally, all right? This is what is happening in the market. We just finished our 2022 assessment year. We know properties have been selling since 2021 and 22. What do we know about 2021 and 22 sales? That's when the market really took off, right, Kim? That's when the market took off. Each one of those sales has a corresponding assessment. Take a look. It's a lagging system because every sale uses the prior year's assessment to maintain this lag, all right? Are we able to figure out where we're going to end up in 2023? Yeah, this is going to be where we calculated, this is the number the state calculates. It's going to be about 10.83% on average. I just averaged all our townships, all right? So are you going to be scared if you only go up by this amount based on everything I've told you? No, I'm telling you this is coming so that you're not worried about it, okay? Why do we do this? We do this in order to maintain that correlation because that correlation is key to what we do. We need to be fair, but we also give you, need to give you a mechanism to check our work. And that's how assessments are designed. If we don't correlate, keep that correlation consistent, you cannot check our work. We maintain equity and we do this in order for everyone to be able to check our work, all right? So understand that that's really what's at play here. Okay? My question to everyone here is, how is the real estate market actually doing right now? And how is it being portrayed? Because that's where the fear is coming from. It's being, what I hear is markets down. Okay, what's down? Values, volume? Volume, right? It's the volume that's down, it's not the values that are down. You see that in this numbers that we use, there is no adjustment for volume. We are taking raw numbers and it's a system that lags. So when these are assessment notices go out in a couple of months, people are going to be thinking, hey, why is it going down if the market's down? It's going to contradict what's being perceived out there. So that's why again, I'm giving you the heads up as to what's happening. Again, I'm hoping that I'm making a bigger deal about this than what actually happens. That's my goal. I would love to be called Chicken Little in this instance, all right? So how are you and your taxpayers going to deal with this? So I'm going to go over an assessment notice, all right? So that you can be ready for when this happens. All right, so here's our assessment notice, all right? How are you reviewing the assessment notices after we equalize? Once we are done with our work, you will get one of these alerts, all right? And for those of you that can't see this, I am going to zoom in in a few seconds, all right? So you're not going to panic before you open it. You're going to say, I'm going to take a breath, you're going to open it up, all right? If you see a large increase on your individual, you're not going to react just yet, all right? You're going to review what the township factor was, all right? So that you can now get some perspective, all right? So you're going to look at these two numbers. This is your individual increase. This is the township increase, okay? That matters. If the number above because we increased it and equalized it is more than the seven, you can expect an increase in your tax bill because of that change, okay? It's just a matter of how much. It's not going to be the full 9%, it's going to be relative to what's happening in your township, okay? If it's less, you can expect a reduction or if it's the same, you can expect the same thing, all right? What are you going to do next? Next, you're going to take a look at your estimate of market value. All right, and then after that, you're going to take a look at your assessment total, all right? So here's your estimate of market value. You're going to say, hey, can I sell my house for 301? Yes, I could. All right, so check that box, I'm good. And I'm going to check to see what other similar properties to mine in my neighborhood are. If the assessments are similar, I'm done, I'm correct, okay? I'm going to have to deal with whatever factor comes through because there might not be any mechanism for me to appeal, all right? If there is issues, then that's when you're going to start making comparisons and looking what's happening in the market, all right? If your assessment or if your assessment doesn't make sense, you're going to reach out to your assessor and say, hey, this doesn't make sense to me. Can you give me an explanation? They will, they will work with you. All of our assessors are really good at doing that, all right? And if they can't do anything for you, or if you call the last day of the deadline and they can't work with you, understand that you can then file an appeal. There's a mechanism. I would say do this early, not later, especially this year. All right? Don't compare the amount of the increase. A lot of times during a quadrennial, we, people just focus in on this and that, that increase of their neighbors. All right, well, my neighbor only went up 3%. Mine went up seven, why is that? That's not fair, you're not treating me fair. Well, it's the total. Your neighbor may have been higher than you, you may have been lower than them. So we have to increase it more than his. So if you come with an argument of that kind, well, listen, but that might not be enough for you to garner the reduction that you think you need, okay? This is all important. Does this make sense? How you're going to deal with this? And again, my goal is that this gets picked up by people on the website. They come looking at and they understand this because this information to me is critical for getting through the next year. All right? So what happens at the border review? An individual has the ability to appeal their assessment. The border review offers a semi-formal review of the assessment. An individual will give their data and their information and then the board will listen to it, all right? But you're not the only one that gets to talk in those. The assessor who has done the work in preparation for this will also get a chance to talk about it. They're going to present their data that says, no, they're okay, or they might be due a slight reduction at this amount, all right? The board will then decide what's the fairest assessment for your property based on all that information, okay? The board will generally make a decision based on the best evidence available. Their goal is also to be fair and make reductions or uphold assessments when warranted. A big misconception is the board wants to keep assessments high. That's not the case. There is no extra money brought in or lost as all my math examples showed you, right? There's no extra money. They are there to be impartial to the process. And if you have good data and if the assessor has good data, then they are put in a tough position to having to make a decision, all right? When there are fewer losses at the border review, the tax rate actually goes down for everyone. And that's important for everyone to understand, all right? So final note. So a lot of you, some of you are saying, hey, Alex, you haven't talked about exemptions. I know that those are important, especially in this last year, especially since the laws have changed, all right? Here's where I'm going to address this. Okay, here's how exemptions work. Let's go back to dinner. All right, these four young people have been inviting Alice to dinner for a while. Alice is getting close to retirement age. They're like, hey, we want Alice to keep coming, right? So we know that 10 bucks is probably a good amount for her to pay. Why don't we pick up the rest of it? All right, so that amount that Alice is saving gets shifted on to everyone else. Exemptions do not touch the bill. Okay? A lot of people think that we try to fix a lot of what's going on with property taxes with exemptions. That's, this is how it actually works, all right? Let's go back to this math example and for those of you that are panicking or really hate this, I'm sorry. All right, I'm going to adjust this to current numbers for this next year. Average is going to be about 11%, right? That was eight. All right, that's going to be about 11. And what do we know about this number down here? It's going to be a little bit less than that because it's going to be in the middle, right? These numbers still yield that 6.7%, all right? Levies are still have the ability to increase 5%. We don't know what the government's going to be taking. When you add in the exemption, or better yet, subtract the exemption, this upper number goes down. Well, what do we know about the number down here? Well, that's just a summation of the numbers up top. So what's going to happen to that number down there? That is also going to go down. So if you get an exemption, you can potentially anticipate to pay something more than you would have without it, all right? 3.61%. But what's going to happen to those that don't get the exemption? Which I think is important. Again, I want you guys to plan and be ready for this. They're going to stay at 11%, which means that with that number, they're going to go up. Okay? Now exemptions did increase this last year. I believe a general homestead exemption went from 6 to 8,000. So there's going to be some relief to homeowners there. And the senior went from 5,000 reduction to 8,000 as well. So those numbers are going to help those individuals, okay? I'm sharing this only so that you guys are aware, all right? And people can make preparations for what's coming. Some of the saddest conversations I've had happened a year and a half after these assessments go out when we can't do anything about it. A mortgage will now increase somebody's tax bill $400 because they need to make up the shortfall from their escrow from last year and now they need to make up what's happening the following year, all right? Those are the people we can't help at that point. If you start taking note of these assessments and where they're at, start planning for it. That's important. Questions?
Before we have any questions, the only thing I'd like to add is that Alex done a great job with this presentation, but he, it makes it look like it's a personal presentation from McHenry County. This is actually going on in every county, in every township in the state of Illinois. Equalization actually comes from the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue dictates, this is law, for each county, for each township to have equalization. The second thing is the CPI increases in law and whether you're a PTALE county or not, also comes from the state of Illinois. We are a PTALE county, like the majority of the Chicagoland area, larger counties. And that CPI of being capped at five actually historically has led to lower tax bills. The problem is, we're also one of the highest in the country in tax bills. So people don't realize what that CPI has done to limit what taxpayers pay in Illinois. But that was put in place when they started. We rely a lot on assessments and property tax for local government and schools. And that's just the way that is. That's just a caveat to say that this is really going on in every single county, et cetera. So. So questions if you have them, please?
Yeah, the assessments, you know, our neighboring counties are experiencing the same thing.
Mr. Sager?
Alex, thank you. I really don't have a question. I just want to say you've done a remarkable job here of putting everything out on the table and in a way that I think is easily palatable for everyone. So thank you so much for that presentation. I also want to thank you for two things. One, for living in Woodstock and two, paying your taxes in Woodstock. So thank you very much.
Not a more perfect example, but yeah.
Mr. Ryder?
That's a fun presentation, Alex. I just have one question, you know? You had mentioned on a few slides back when the fair cash value was, I think it was 301,900.
Yes.
Okay, and then a few slides before that, you say you're always just a little bit farther behind.
Correct.
In your assessment.
Correct.
So if, as one that does fight tax, you know, tax assessments, and I'm sure Kim does too, when, when the board of review looks at that and says, hey, we're right on with your value, but in fact, you're 12% behind. So if you are right on with that value, when somebody goes to appeal, does he take that into consideration, do you think?
Here's my, here's my theory. Market value is the highest acceptable assessment for any property. That is the final check on value, all right? So if you want to make sure that your assessment is correct, do it with checking your market value. If it makes no sense that your market value, you can't sell it, then that's obviously the, you're an indicator that you should appeal. But you should be consistent with your neighborhood as well, all right? So look at that consistent. So, um, look at that consistency. In those instances where the market value is o- okay, or we could sell it for, um, I could actually sell my house for 310, 315, so it lags behind. But you still wanna be consistent with everyone. So that equity is really important in those situations, because that is the case. It's a conservative number, should be conservative. And right now, it's obvious to everyone that that's, those numbers should be a little bit more on the conservative side. I mean, slightly on the conservative side.
Let me add one thing, a couple things. Um, as Department of Revenue John calls fair cash value for assessments, let, let's add a third value in there. There's market value, the fair cash value based on a three-year sales ratio, and then assessed value, or equalized assessed. The difference is, we have to be at 33 and 1/3 of fair cash value, which may not be market value, 'cause we're using a three-year sales ratio. You're not gonna wanna sell your property in an upmarket at the low line. You're gonna wanna sell it at the high line. But we're down here, because in an upmarket, if we're using a three-year sales rash, ratio, we're gonna be safely below market. That's the year we find ourselves now. The good thing is, if we're below market, and now we just work on equalization, everybody's fair. That's the, that's the caveat. We, in an upmarket, fair cash value would never be equivalent to market value. When those lines switch, now we got a problem. When, when this was made, it was for both an upmarket like that, like that, like maybe flat. It wasn't built for the one in 2008 that went down.
Thanks. Ms. Messers?
Thank you. Um, I guess I have two questions, maybe three, depending on how you count them. Um, who sets the exemption amounts and the exemption policy? Is that county level, state level, federal level?
All of those are set at the state.
The state, okay. Um, and then the other question I had, um, when people complain about their taxes, to me, I say, "Well, you know, you gotta, you gotta, um, challenge the assessments." How successful are those? And, um, like, so like, I don't, I know people who don't challenge their assessments, and so they're, um, probably paying a little bit of extra burden than they maybe should. Um, but also at the same time, it seems like an inefficiency to tell everybody to challenge their assessments for your office, right? 'Cause that's, then we gotta pay for all these appraisers.
I could, um, it, it, it varies in success and successfulness year to year. The last couple years, um, because of the sales in the market, unless we've made a mistake, you, you don't have a case. Um, and, and appeals are down for it. Um, in 2008, actually 2010, because the market crashed in 2008, the last go-round, we didn't experience it till 2010 or 11 in the assessments, because we were still going positive even when the market tanked in 08, because we got three years to catch up. If you wanted a 30% decrease in 2010 on market value, all you had to do was either bring your sale price of your home or get the three comps that showed a 30% decrease in the market, 'cause that happened overnight when the credit markets froze. Back then, it was about 90% successful if you were bringing that case to the Board of Review. Those that didn't bring it, they were gonna get to the 30% decrease, but it was gonna take 10% a year, three years to get there. The, what will happen now, in, to, in, uh, since we've had positive equalization since 2015, um, assessments get, tend to be run over by equalization if they're not cream puffs. And what I mean by cream puffs is, those that are eligible to be sold at the max value for what that neighborhood can bring, because that house has been well-kept, it's been updated, it's sparkling clean. We'll get now a lot of appeals based on condition. Really, the equalization factor, in my opinion, this is only my opinion, is based on the equalization rate for those properties that sold. We have to apply it to everyone. So a house that has been, that is outdated, a house that maybe is in poor condition, et cetera, may be eligible for an, uh, a drop, a decrease, but not, it'd be tough for one that has sold or, uh, a nice property.
Thank you. And then my third question, um, was, this is all public. People's assessments are all public knowledge, right? It's public, searchable?
Correct.
And how long, when do these assessments come out? And how long do they have to challenge them?
They come out, um, they're published anywhere between when the townships come in, we're done editing the township for just what, the changes they've made, asking that, "Did you really mean to do this? Was that a mistake you made?" Uh, we finalize the township. There's 30 days from the date that they're published in the newspaper, and they're sent the notice. So a 30-day window to appeal. During that period, you could go see your assessor, but you could go stop and see your assessor at any point, uh, during the year if you had a question with, uh, just, and, actually, when we, when we get an appeal sometimes, what, what it really is, is, is about is they're trying to say, "Could you please review this and make sure it's right? 'Cause I don't know. My tax bill's high in Illinois. I just want some assurance." That's where we try to get the township assessors. "Will you please be, uh, amenable to these calls and explain the situation like we are?" 'Cause it, it, it's best when you go one-to-one with someone and try to explain a very complicated system that leads to a high tax bill.
Uh, so what? So the assessments are coming out?
They'll come out, begin, they'll start to come out, be published in June, and they'll go all the way to September. Typically, Elgonquin is one of the last ones in. Richmond and, uh, is one of the first ones. And then everybody else is in between.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
And when you say "visit your assessor," you mean your township assessor?
Township assessor, I'm sorry. Township assessor is the original one. They're in charge of it till it gets sent to the Board of Review, but they still try to explain to Board of Review why they came to their, uh, procedure. Uh, one final thing about appealing, you know, we have to give them the right to appeal, because that's just the, um, for their production, and, and it's just the right thing to do in terms of law, et cetera, to give them an opportunity to appeal that assessment. So it's not about, some people believe I have to do that just to make sure, and believe me, there's people that do do it every year, or at least make that phone call. But that has to be done as, as part of just due process.
Thank you. Mr. Scala?
Alex, I wanna thank you again for a great presentation. Um, you did an excellent job last time, and I think you actually did a better job this time, so. I appreciate it very much. Can you roll back your screens to, um, just towards the end of the 22, before you started talking about 23?
And while I'm doing this, all the township, almost all the townships have websites where this, their assessment information and your property, individual property information is available, so. Right, the, this tax bill, or?
Yeah, so, a, and this is where I, I wanted to draw the Board's attention, because again, this is our direct impact about what's going on with the tax bill. So you started your little presentation with, uh, 2021's tax bill?
Correct. Well, no, 2021's, um, equalize, uh, the rate, the, the rate-setting math.
Right, so go back another...
2021?
Yeah, this one. So you talked about the limiting rate being, I can't, 7.74 or 7.3? I can't read that real well.
Yeah, uh, 7.64.
7.64.
Uh, uh, point, I'm sorry, .7364 last, uh, the prior year.
Okay, .7364. So, um, and then you roll forward to 22, and that went to 6...
.6981.
Right. So I, I would like you to explain to the Board why the limiting rate in fact went down, but the tax bill and tax amount paid actually went up.
Okay, so the rate went down, um, because the equalized assessed value up here went up. Remember, we are changing the scale in, uh, uh, in, using equalization in order to kind of adjust and keep pace with what's happening in the market. That assessment increase is responsible for a large portion of this. Right, uh, in terms of just the math. That, 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 that larger base. It gives you a larger base to distribute this small increase of 2% increase of the levy amount. So that's why the math, the rate goes down. The taxes go up, because while McHenry County, um, my compliment to you is you're very responsible, um, were able to stay level on my tax bill. All right? Because it only went up 2% and my assessment went up as, as, as expected. All right? So the math worked. The example that I give you of not to worry about, there should be a lip, uh, there should be a minimal effect on your tax bill, works with, with McHenry County because of the levy amount increase and this assessment increase.
If the assessment's increase of equalization is higher than the amount, uh, the, the percentage increase in the, the base, taxes will still go up, even though the rate goes down. If the equalization factor is eight, and we ask for 3% more money, the rate's gonna go down, but the net result could actually be an increase over the last year, which leads also to the confusion, I think, among...
That's why I'm drawing, that's why I'm, I'm having...
Yeah, and again, i- it's, it's all about the math in this instance. Um, because again, the rate's down, uh, because of the assessment increase. All right? It, is, is, is plain, plain and simple. But your assessment was also adjusted based off of this scale, which is why it's more. All right? 'Cause you're missing that last component.
Yeah, I, I want, I, I wanted you to go over that a little bit more in detail so that the Board members would understand the mechanism of which the math works.
Yep.
And, you know, as far as a payer goes, it doesn't work, but I mean...
Sorry, a, a, a small pet peeve is when people say, "Hey, we lowered your rate." No, no, we, we lowered the rate. The assessment's really is, uh, has, is a, has a large reason for that rate going down. We don't get the credit that we deserve, so I'm gonna throw that out there.
So Board members, if you, if you wanna have a positive say, "Well, we actually lowered it, lowered the limiting rate from, you know, from 7.364 to 6.981."
Yeah, that, that, that's it.
That would be the, that would be your talking point.
Got it. Taken.
Okay.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Ms. Greenow?
Well, yes, once again, thank you for an excellent presentation. I know that the state has determined that this is how we're going to fund our local taxing bodies. You, uh, probably have situations where you go to, uh, I don't know, for training, certification, conferences, conventions, I'm not sure, where you were able to see, uh, other states and how they do this. And when you look at Illinois's model compared to the other 50 states, does it make sense? Is it overly complicated? Are there things that, that you can see in this area of expertise that, uh, could really impact how we live and fund ourselves?
I, I mean, I, I think, I think the system is, is set up there. It all gets back to how much money you're trying to... In other words, we wouldn't have an assessed value at all in McHenry County if we got all our money from, let's say, state income tax and sales tax. And, and by law, we didn't, didn't, weren't gonna collect much money from property tax. Now, that's happens in a lot of states. It's a sliding scale. For 50 states, they're all different. Many of them have county assessment, rather than township. That's another, another argument that really is not germane to this. I mean, when you got kinda numbers like this with terms of CPI, in terms of equalization factors, I don't care who's doing the assessment, you're gonna get grief. So if somebody says, "Whoa, I, I think that the county should be doing it, 'cause they, they're gonna do better than 17 townships working differently." No. You're, you're, you're gonna have problems when you have a high property tax, and you're, you're seeing those complaints that come out of states like California, and New York, and Illinois, and New Jersey. And if you, if you look at those states, and if you look at where the out-migrations coming from those states, that's where it's coming from. And they're going to states, by and large, that are in the South and in the Southwest. Um, good luck on the Southwest. My mom, I was reminded a couple of, uh, family events ago that my mother used to say back in the 1970s. There's gonna come a day when everybody in Colorado and California list, wish they lived in Waukegan, Illinois. 'Cause they're gonna run out of water, and that's...
Okay, so...
That's what's happening.
And, and so just to take it, uh, just to repeat back to you. So basically, uh, we're gonna raise our money through sales or income or property, or fees, uh, 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 you know, as a state. We've set up that model, so that when people would be talking about property taxes and say they're gonna go to wherever, that's gonna somehow be a magical solution, um, they'd have to actually look at all of these other components as a whole. And what we need to pay attention to is when we already got this system set up to raise money and really tax people according to their means through the property taxes, uh, when somebody starts messing around with sales tax or income tax, that's where we need to, to be watching it, because now we're getting it from different angles.
Uh, I mean, I, we all have to watch our assessment. We all have to watch what local officials are doing. We have to watch what state officials are doing, and depending on what system you have. People don't realize in Illinois, though, we do have a lot of benefit in local government, in the quality of schools, et cetera, more so than other states. They don't wanna look at that. What, what people want is, "I want a property tax bill from Arkansas. I want a state income tax bill from Florida, and I want something else from somewhere else." It doesn't work like that. We're not the highest state overall in taxes. With, most, most states have a graduated income tax. We don't have that, like, similar to the federal tax code. In my opinion, a graduated state tax is probably most fair, but I'm not going into that either. But, you know, we, we, we are not the highest. We do have a lot of, um, a lot of things we get from local government, schools, but again, um, it, like, people make the unfair argument about, "Well, that state, does, they don't have any state income." Again, it, it's, it, it's, but that's, that's the situation. So it, it is meant to be fair, but if you get a lot of, if a lot of gu, money comes from property tax rather than the state. I will say one thing about the state, though. We, and this is just a, a financial thing, you know? All of us, I don't think we have the, you know, Pete could talk to this, and, and maybe you could. We're not getting the kinda grants we got for education and other things in the state of Illinois that we used to get. So that puts even more pressure on the property tax. And there was another piece of legislation that was passed, um, involving, uh, uh, that was brought by a legislator from here that went after, um, refunds coming from taxpayers rather than districts on PTAB loss. You know, but, so the state really, they got so many problems right now, they don't wanna deal with this property tax situation. That's some of the, some of the problems we have now, too. We're really relied, reliant on property tax because of some of that shortcomings. Plus, there was a promise made in 1970 that the state said, "Well, we always got your back and local government, and we can make an argument they do or they don't."
Right. Um, and I just wanna respond to what you were talking about with the graduated, and this is a graduated tax, the property tax. I mean, it is, based on...
Well, the property, no, the property tax is based on, it's, it's called ad valorem, according to value. That's what it's based on.
Right. Right, and you would assume that a person was having property relative to.
I will agree with you, the, you, you pick off as, as big of a bite as you wanna chew. The higher the, the more expensive the property, the more you will pay. Yes, that is correct.
I think the, the other piece, as far as what the state hasn't been giving to, back to us, is, is a unknown issue of the local government. Distributive fund that the municipalities haven't been receiving uh as they were historically, and that puts the additional burden uh locally for them, for them to make that up.
Correct.
Which hopefully is changing soon.
We'll work on it.
I hope so, yeah. Ms. Benhoff?
First of all, I would like to thank both of you for the presentation. It was wonderful and I think it will aid to my understanding when I'm talking to constituents. That is uh when I'm knocking on doors, that is the question that I hate most, that they're gonna ask, why are my taxes so high? And um what I've been saying to them, Robert, is what you just said. Um, when I compare Illinois to Indiana, you know, when um, when I got married to my late husband, he had two children, we looked at the schools. So, we looked at the schools in South Bend and we looked at the schools in Crystal Lake. And it was a clear choice. So, this is what I try to say to, to people who are complaining about the high rate of their taxes is like, okay, look at what we're getting for this. We're look, we're getting great schools. Well, then I might get the comment, well, we don't have kids in school anymore. So, okay, realizing that this still elevates your property. It, it elevates the price that you can expect to get for your property if you know that you live in a neighborhood that has good schools. So, all that being said, I just wonder if you have a quick elevator s- statement that we may tell our constituents um to, to give them some kind of good feeling about that tax bill when it arrives?
I, I mean, you, you know, you, you get what you pay for.
That's good.
To a certain extent, but then, you know, of course, if they don't have any children in school, they're gonna say, whoa, what, I don't care. Where my high school is rated or, or grade school is rated. I'm still not getting, that's, that's the system, pay it forward, pay it back, that we have. So, but that, it does help to, to say it's not, I, I find it, it, it's really not fair to bring up an individual state. You, you really have to get into such a detail to look at where does the money come from and what are the benefits that are, that are received throughout all that money that's collected? That's a, that's a tough, but again, everyone wants to cherry pick the argument, which makes it difficult for us in a high property tax state.
Thank you.
Ms. Ness?
Well, um, I think tax bills are an emotional experience for people and reason, reason doesn't matter. I think people look at it, they look at the dollar amount, they don't look at the evaluation of their property. And um, and so, my question is actually to uh, you know, to our staff, that there is a way that we create a messaging plan that is simple, that we can use, that people can access, that even, and even when people are in those emotional places, that we then can offer to them as, as a, a countywide messaging, helping them to understand. Because this was great, and I'm one of those uh no math per people, right? I'm still a little like, oh, okay, I'm better than I was when I got here this morning. But I would not want to explain it like this to anyone. It's not my strong suit. So, something, Pete and Alicia, that is a messaging from, that actually, we actually feel like we have knowledge to talk about it, would be really helpful.
Right, well, I, I don't think you would have to, we can refer them to this because we are planning on putting it on the county website as well. So, people, you can not have to explain it to them, refer them to the county website, let them take a look at it.
I think that's too complicated for the general person. They, I'm not, I, I don't disagree with you, but I think there's something from us that.
Go ahead, Alicia.
Yes, we do intend to put this message um split into two parts, onto county website, social media. I know that Treasurer Kurtz is also looking at opportunities to um educate the public as well about tax bills, and I look forward to helping um with any campaigns that come out.
I, I have received that criticism about the presentation and I, that's why I tried to, again, I structured the presentation in this format because I know that. Same time, that math is critical to the explanation and understanding. So, that's why I kept it in and simplified it in this fashion. I agree with you, if I can give somebody this math knowledge and understanding, I, I would. But it's one of those things where, again, like I said, did not, did Bob not cover everything I said with just two sentences early on? All this is pretty much the same, it, it, it's still that comment, but it's the understanding and the actual work that's involved that people really need to understand and comprehend. So, but yes, get, getting those, the videos, and I have more videos that I have in my mind to potentially do, to um, to help that process.
We have, we have taxpayers that are as well versed in assessments and property taxes as he and I. And they understand this and they're regulars and they're still upset. So, it, the, the level of understanding may not help you write two checks or, I don't think you write checks anymore, two payments that are the highest two payments other than, than maybe what you send to the federal government that you make all year. That just gets to be a tricky, uh, an emotional experience.
Okay, Mr. Hendricks?
Other than the uh raising or lowering.
Pull your mic to you, please.
Oh, I have it. Other than raising or lowering the levy, is there anything that the county board can be doing to help provide uh tax relief uh to the local residents?
Pete, I think, uh, my quick answer is anything we can do to help with economic development, right? And, and, and to expand that commercial base and expand, expand an employment base is going to have a positive impact on, on the residential tax base.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. I mean, for instance, when um one of our lowest school district tax rates um is in, uh, it's a community, is, are in two places, uh, El Gauglin and Huntley. It's because of the amount of commercial, industrial, and senior living that contributes to senior housing, that contributes to lower tax rates. Uh, the village of Gurnee does not levy for the property tax because they have so much commercial and industrial value that the city gets enough, the village gets enough revenue from property tax. So, Pete's correct, particularly commercial and, and industrial. Because if, if, if districts or school districts take new construction each year, that's not gonna go down, but they might be less if they have more. You know, when Sun City went into Huntley, that was equivalent of getting about twenty Walmarts in your village.
Is, is there any direct action? I, I understand uh that, you know, if the econ, the local economy grows, uh, that can provide relief. But is there any direct action that the board would be able to take? I, I know there was, there was some mention early on in the presentation of, of an assessment holiday. Is that just kicking the can down the road?
Yeah, the, yeah, the assessment holiday, that, that slide, that was just to illustrate that even if we increase assessments at zero, it's still gonna go up. So, that was the purpose of that, of, of that slide, to show that that's really not gonna have the effect that, that you're thinking about.
The county board does have a lot of influence in various states where they control the school district. There are many states in the country where uh the school district is controlled by the county and the county board, and they are a subsidiary of the county. But, not here.
Yeah, uh, turn.
So, the county, the county, uh, they're either only influence, direct influence that we would be able to do by ourselves would be related simply to the levy?
It's a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a direct influence, but it's not a stretch to know that the investment you're making in the transportation infrastructure is gonna set the table for economic development.
No, no, I, I understand. I, I agree with you, uh, but I was just wondering if there's any direct action that the board would be able to take other, outside of the levy itself?
No, that would be it, and then what you do with the levy or how much you would have paid, that would, that would be in this very direction.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, turn, turning the lights on in any shuttered buildings or factories would absolutely go a long way. I mean, turning, turning the lights on existing property, maximizing that real estate value. It's the only thing I could think of, potentially. And, and, and anything that's being underutilized, existing being underutilized. That could potentially help in some form or fashion. Might be peanuts, but it's, it's, it's a way to potentially help.
Okay, so no further questions? Bob, Alex, thanks for making taxes fun again. Okay, we'll move on to the uh new business. Do any members have an agenda item they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Scala?
Uh, eleven B one, two, and three, and seventeen B two, eleven.
Seventeen B two, eleven. Any others? Mr. Smith?
Uh, did I hear correctly, eleven B one, two, and three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, Mr. Scala? Eleven B one?
So, eleven B one, my understanding, is there some changes that uh you guys are gonna be making?
Go ahead, Larry.
Uh, yes. Uh, in the conditions, it was the feeling of the PED committee that paragraph two, um, where it says the processed material would be in bins six feet high. Um, it was the feeling of the committee that we would just go along with what has been the history out there and remove the words before and after and just put all materials processed. Um, uh, replace the six with eighteen feet. And in paragraph twelve, um, the unprocessed uh wood and logs would be, um, instead of fifteen, um, put it at the eighteen. So, both, both levels of the piles would be eighteen feet high. Um, for the rest of the board, this is a wood mulching, wood processing property that's been there for quite some time and they're renewing their conditional use permit. Uh, and it was the feeling of the PED committee to allow them to do this, a little bit more lenient than what the ZBA had on their conditions.
So, I guess my question is, is the intent that someone will make a motion to amend? Or are we going to have that modified for Tuesday evening?
It was my understanding that I'd make a motion to amend that on Tuesday evening.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Scala, eleven B two?
Yes, eleven B two. So, I was reading um the CBA's comments um regarding this property. And, and what I, what I'm a little confused about is, um, so this is requested right next to a commercial use. Um, I, I guess it's like a, a, a dog sanctuary, I guess, that we had already approved. And so, I'm, I'm a little confused as to their reasoning behind why they, why they did what they did. I, I don't know if Adam, you can speak to that at all? I mean, I, you know, some of the comments ab- about it were pertaining to, you know, where it's located and, and I'm like, okay, well, that's forty-seven corridor. I mean, that, I, so.
Sure.
I'm happy to understand better, I guess.
Yeah, well, I'll turn it over to Renee for a detailed explanation.
The future land use plan, the twenty thirty plan, shows that area to eventually develop into retail business. So, although to develop the property with retail, you would need the B three zoning, this particular use, they didn't feel really kinda met the mark for what the forty-seven corridor should eventually, the type of business that it should develop into, which should be more retail, not this is more of a storage quasi-industrial type of use. And the dog sanctuary next door is technically considered an agricultural use. Does that help?
Well, but, but it's, on, on the map, it's read as commercial, though.
It is.
So, I guess I'm, I, I feel like, to me, there's a little disconnect. I mean, I understand the twenty thirty plan is the twenty thirty plan, right? But I think we all kind of understand that retail has changed. And I don't wanna be short-sighted by someone trying to operate a business, especially when there's already a business literally right next door that we've already approved. And, and so, I, I, I kinda disagree with their thought process, I guess. And, and, and I understand it's based on standards, which is what we, what they have and what they're supposed to be using. But um, I know, and we're, we're going through and relooking at all that, but I just, I don't wanna be, um, I don't wanna be short-sighted as, as a board member on what potentially could be happening, I guess. So, I, I guess my comment to the board is I kinda disagree with their assessment, not because I feel like they're trying to do a disservice, but because they're using information that I feel is outdated or, or maybe not in the best interest of the county currently.
And I will say that the conversation with the zoning board was that eventually they agree that this corridor should be commercial, but they felt that this particular site was premature and developing that way. It wa, it was more of a leapfrog development because of the distance from Woodstock.
And again, I'm just, I'm, I'm disagreeing with that, so. Thank, thank you for helping me understand better.
Sure.
Mr. Goddard-Boller?
If I may, on, on the same thing, what, what, what I'm seeing in the real estate world and in the other zoning cases and the other things that I've seen in the, in the area is, is that there's a huge demand for storing semis. Um, you know, down in Hampshire, there's a petition that's been running into all kinds of trouble that I have nothing to do with, but I watched it for two hundred acres of semi parking. Um, if you look at this area, um, just south of this area is Lakewood and Thornton's is building a ten-acre truck yard. So, I, I, you know, I, maybe these petitioners didn't realize how close they are, but comparing it to Woodstock isn't the issue, it's comparing it to Lakewood. Um, so, that, that's the trouble I have with saying no to this, is that it's what's coming there. There's gonna be trucks parked all up and down forty-seven when they get done building the four lanes. Um, the Thornton's there, just to give you an idea. Um, the Thornton's in that location, again, I've not involved in any of the zoning, but Thornton's, it will be, is literally the only place you can fill up, uh, when they finish. It'll be the only place you can buy diesel for a semi, basically between Harvard and ra, Route ninety. And that's why they're putting it there, because they figure they're gonna pull trucks in from all the surrounding communities and they're gonna fill up there and move on down the road. So, um, the fact that, you know, a short, very short distance, somebody else wants to park trucks nearby on an area that we had originally called for retail, doesn't really surprise me.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I've read through some of this and, and unfortunately, I didn't get to all of it. Uh, I know that regarding the, the rezoning, uh, the ZBA didn't feel that uh, that this should be out by the egg, the property be better suited for a municipality. And the other issue we have was the variance that they requested. Uh, and I believe I could uh ask Renee to comment on that. It's, uh, they asked for a variance, uh, so they didn't have to pave the parking lot, um, which there was concerns about fuel leakage. Um, I believe there's, um, there was other issues with the no washroom out there, et cetera. Uh, so, once again, Renee, please.
Thank you. So, to make things our life more difficult, the ZBA took this petition apart and they voted separately on the rezoning. The conditions, if you guys were to determine that the property should be rezoned and the conditional use permit awarded, they took separate votes on the two variations being requested. So, there's the two variations, one is the paving. And currently, we require any storage yard to be paved or to be finished with a hard surface. Um, they want to do gravel in the area. So, they're asking for that waiver from our standards. The other, probably more complicated part of this petition is currently our UDO doesn't allow for this kind of use for semi truck parking, for renting out parking spaces for semi trucks. The closest thing that we have in the ordinance is a storage yard. But one of the requirements for a storage yard is that you can only store equipment that either the owner or a tenant of the property owns. So, in order to even consider this type of use, they had to ask for a variation from that standard. So, that variation, the zoning board voted unanimously to approve, recognizing exactly what Mr. Goddard-Boller said, is that we recognize that this is a use that the county needs. So, they were good with that portion, but not in this location, is the easiest way to say it. The other complicating factor is if you thought this was a great project, so you wanted to approve everything that they're asking for, because the zoning board of appeals recommends denial of the paving waiver, then it would require you guys to have a three-quarter majority in order to approve that.
Would it be easier to split this, because this is three votes? I mean, eleven B two, A, B, and C? I mean, this is, as far as the clerk tracking this vote uh Tuesday night, it, it doesn't seem to be very clear on, on how this was gonna go down.
We struggled with how to do that because there is, it's, there's so much going on here.
I mean, my, personally, I'm okay with approving it. I'm not okay with the pavement being gravel. And, and partially, just because you're gonna have some ice going back and forth. And we all know gravel in the summertime becomes dusty and, and I, so I'm not cool with that. And, and I would say that does need to happen. But the other two components of it, I, I don't have any issue with at all. And if they wanna go forward with it and, and pave it, uh, because I wanna be a good neighbor to the dog place, whatever, I don't, whatever that is, sanctuary, you know, and I don't want dust because they're north. So, you know, as the wind blows out of the north to the south, I don't need dust, you know, going over there. So, to me, the paving part, I think, needs to happen if that's what they wanna do. Um, but the rest of it, I'm completely fine with. So, I mean, that would be, I guess that would be how I would like to see it voted on. So, I mean, that would be, I guess that would be how I would like to see it voted on. Well, no, it's not split. It's just simply making that condition a requirement.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, well, I would say voting on it split would be the easiest way to do it. I'm not in favor of this particular petition. Certainly not in the variance, for some of the things Mr. Scala said. The dust and the prevalent wind in the summer coming out of the west could, I mean, literally leave blackout, dust-out conditions on Route 47? I mean, that's going to be a dusty mess out there if it's not paved. So I will definitely be voting against that. I don't think I'll support this petition in any manner. So I would recommend we split the votes.
I agree. I think it would be much easier that way.
And just to clarify, to make it as simple as possible, just to take out the variation vote, the one that requires the three-quarter majority, leave everything else together, or to break it out the way the ZBA did, where they took four votes?
I personally think it would be fine.
Three issues here.
They voted, let me see, rezoning, conditional use, the conditions associated with the conditional use, and the two variations. So they actually took five votes.
Well, I minimally want the variations out.
Mr. Godamoller? Ms. Ness, could you turn off your mic for a second? I will get you a next. Sorry.
I would say start with zoning. If you don't have that, the rest of it is irrelevant.
No vote needed if the initial one doesn't pass?
Correct. And I think that would be the best way to go. If it doesn't pass on that part, then the rest of it is moot, so...
Ms. Ness?
So there are a couple of other concerns. I am not in support of this petition. When I think about Route 47 and truck traffic and new construction on 47 that's going to start traveling on it now, I absolutely agree with the paving. 47 is kind of a nightmare, anyway, to travel down. And so I think this project feels fractured, fragmented to me, and not ready. That's how it feels to me. It feels like the application is not ready. It's not, it has not been thought out down the road a piece, no pun intended. But, so I just feel this project's not ready. And I could not, I'm not going to support it in any way.
Okay, so no further questions. Mr. Scala, 17B211?
11B3?
Or 11B3, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, again, having problems with thought process here. So... Why can't, why can't there be a house built on the property currently? It's Zone A1.
So currently, it's Zone A1, which requires a 40-acre minimum lot size to support one single-family home. So from the history that was provided, this, the larger property at one point was 40 acres. One home was constructed.
Right.
Subsequently, they split off this 12 acres. So you would, you have to rezon the property in order to reduce the minimum lot size requirement to support one home.
So how is the current property that took off 12 acres, so that's basically been grandfathered, or just non-compliant?
I haven't thought about that yet. We focused on this zoning request, but according to when it was done, they may well have created themselves an unbuildable A1 parcel, meaning that if their home were destroyed by more than 51%, they might have to come to you and ask for a variance or rezoning in order to rebuild. They haven't done any research to know that for certain, but that would be the impact.
Yeah, so that creates other issues. So by the request going from A1 to R1, all that's basically doing is allowing a smaller acreage to be able to be buildable.
Correct.
And I'm asking this because I'm not knowledgeable. Do we not have any other ag designation that has less acreage?
Well, I guess all of this kind of ties together when you look at this history. So as most of you know, I worked here in the mid-'90s as the senior planner. And back then, the A2 district, we allowed rezoning to A2 for vacant properties. During the 2030 comprehensive plan, that was analyzed and in an effort of, or as a tool for what they believed would be preserving agricultural properties, they determined that you should not be able to rezone vacant property to the A2 zoning district. Because what was happening, in effect, was people were stripping out five- and 10-acre parcels all along roadways where they had the access to the properties. And that probably isn't the best way to develop the county. So there was a lot of thought and energy that went into changing, turning that policy around. And there are a couple of members of the zoning board, very longtime members of the zoning board, that were members of the plan commission during that planning effort. So they well remember all of that conversation. So what was decided was that A2, you only could qualify for A2 zoning if you had an existing home. You couldn't rezone vacant properties into the A2 zoning. So what that has done is people who have a portion of their farmland that they feel isn't productive, and they want to divide it and sell it for a single home site, then they have to go to the E5 zoning or all the way up to the R1 zoning. But they have to rezone to a single family. So there is no ag district available.
Okay. So why was R1 recommended to them, then?
R1, and I don't know what the conversation with the planner was. I plan to find out more about that conversation, but we never tell anyone what to ask for. We always advise what their options are, for obvious reasons, because it's not up to us. But across the street from this property is an R1 subdivision. So it's a subdivision that was done, I'm not even sure what the date is. It was zoned R1, although I will say the lots are larger. It looks more like an estate subdivision. So again, during the 2030 comprehensive plan and the energy and time that they spent on trying to figure out how to not disrupt agricultural areas, they looked at subdivisions around the county that are more isolated, that aren't adjacent to municipalities, are rural crossroads, or that are basically just plopped down in the middle of ag areas. And they designated those as isolated residential. And then there's a policy in the land, in the comprehensive plan, that says, we recognize that these are there, we also recognize that it's premature development, and it shouldn't in any way give justification for a trend of development. So it basically says, under normal circumstances, I would look across the street and go, hey, that's R1, this should be R1. But what it says is you have to ignore that, because we're acknowledging that that subdivision was premature.
So if it was you, and you were looking at doing this, what would be the proper designation that you would try and go for?
If it were me, or if I were an attorney advising them, I guess what I would have said, and what people usually do, is because they're purchasing 12 acres, I would have asked for the highest-density, single-family district, which would be E5. The zoning board of appeals would have had the same recommendation, because we've had that request come through many times, and they've made it very clear. When we had these conversations about taking away the ability to rezone vacant property to A2, we know that people are going to try to circumvent that by asking for E5, so we're going to look at that the same way. So they would have recommended denial. Since I've been back, this board has approved at least one petition similar to that, that I can think of. But the other thing that was troubling for the zoning board of appeals is that R1 is our highest-density residential zoning district.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I don't feel comfortable with the R1. That's why I'm trying to figure out, if we can't make it work under an A designation, which it sounds like we technically could, we would just have to approve a variance to allow that?
That might be a question for Mr. Godamoller. Could you vary the requirement that there had to be a home on the property?
Mr. Godamoller?
You can always ask. I mean, that's the, the reality is, is the...
Not going to come in.
No, no. The Supreme Court has said for years, there's the privileges and immunity clause in the US Constitution. You can always ask your government for relief. So no matter what the category is, you can always ask for relief. I find it amazing that R1 is to the north of this. There are very, very few R1 parcels in McHenry County, because for years, they wouldn't, you just had zero chance to get R1 approved. The only other ones that I can think of that happened recently were when, was in Ridgefield. And that's 15 years ago. So, I mean, there may be some other R1s someplace, but there aren't many of them. I certainly have no trouble with this gentleman having a house here. When you make this R1, the concern is, and he's only asked for a portion of this to be zoned, which is helpful, but it's also harmful in another way. If you had R1 on all 12 acres, in theory, you could put 12 houses here. Now, with densities and whatever, it won't work. But in theory, you could do that, which is one of the reasons why people don't want to see R1 in the middle of the countryside, because you could, I mean, even the stuff across the street, if it's actually zoned R1, every one of those homes could be divided in two right now. And we'd have to approve the subdivision plan for that size. So you don't really want to go to an R1 because of that size. The other problem with R1 is it's small enough that it's going to be very difficult in many places to get a septic on an R1 lot, just because of their size. Even as proposed here, this R1 is, I think, about 100 feet short of a full acre. But, which brings to next thing. So if you had an E, I mean, me personally, would I approve an E5? Yes, I would. I'd approve an E3, honestly. I have trouble with an R1 just because of those density issues and what traditionally we've done. But that's what we've traditionally done. Could you do an A2 with a variation, because you don't have anything there? I think you'd ask for it, but you've got to meet variation standards, then, and there are different set of standards. But, yeah, I don't, this is, you know, we've had a gentleman coming to us for now six months talking about unintended consequences. E, A2 has been around now for 20 years, and it's gone from being able to be subdivided to being able to only be used now in places where there's a house. And it's because they were trying to protect areas out there. The other thing I've noted, we were just handed the sheet. The other difference is, and Mr. Scala asked about this at the beginning, why can't you build something on this? If this 12 acres was split off before, I think it's either November 1st or December 1st, 1979, instead of in 1980, it would be buildable today, grandfathered in, without any discussion about zoning. The split came when they changed the state statute, and they basically put the Plaid Act in and made a Plaid Amendment, and that's how the laws changed. And so prior to that time in '79, you could break anything out by recording your Plaid survey. And if you go in areas in the county where you see a whole series of five-acre lots along roadways, that's when they were broken off, virtually always. This missed that point by six months. And as a result, here we are 30 years later. So, anyway. Which way we go with it? I personally think the guy ought to be able to build his house, but I don't think what he's asked for makes any sense here. But that could be because it's just, where are we going to solve these problems?
Well, so that, I guess that's my, so that's my question. I agree, R1 is not proper here. But I do think they should be able to build a house. So my question is, and I would prefer to keep it as an A zoning, not even E or, you know, E3 or E5.
And that brings us to one other problem. We could probably amend it, and I asked Norm about this right at the beginning of the meeting. We could probably make some amendments, but every amendment I know of at .99 acres is going to require variations. If you, you know, if you call it A2, it requires a variation. Variations weren't published for. It didn't give the neighborhood notice, it didn't give the zoning board notice. You're going to, I think almost any way we do this, we're going to end up back for a new zoning hearing.
Which is, which is fine, and we can waive the fees for the zoning hearing, because it's already been gone through. So, I mean, and if that's, not that I'm trying to put them through more hoops, but I agree with you, it has to be properly noticed. But I think providing some direction, and at least at the minimum, waiving the fees for the hearing, would be, in my term, proper for them having to go through all these hoops again.
I don't have an objection to that. Not that it's up to me, but, you know, I don't disagree. I think this is a place that somebody ought to be able to build a house.
So, but I think as a board, you know, we need to provide proper guidance, I guess, as to what would work. And, you know, they can withdraw the petition and refile, but I think...
I'd actually, if it were up to me, I would send it back. But I'm not sure that we usually do that very often here. I can't remember a time we've done it in the last 10 years. But I also can't remember a time when you've seen something that, you know, missed the automatic allowance by six months 30 years ago, and it's been vacant for 30 years.
Well, but sending it back doesn't do anything in the sense that...
40 years ago.
Huh?
40 years ago.
Okay, well, but sending it back doesn't do anything, because sending it back implies that it's still under the R1. They really need to refile.
They have to be able to amend.
Well, I don't know if that's possible. Can they do that?
All we're saying is send it back and let it be reconsidered. You could file a new petition at that point in time or amend your petition. You'll have to republish the notice. There's no, I don't know any way around publishing it. I don't think, I don't think there's any way you can avoid it. And if it was done for 12 acres of R1, I think we could arguably say we could go to R3. But it's done for .99 acres. I don't, I just don't think you can do it.
You definitely would have to renotice, because they would have to, their legal would have to include more...
More land.
Yeah.
I guess... To me, I think it needs to be done properly and noticed. And that's why I have a kind of a problem sending it back. But I think if we were to give direction to the parties involved and be, as a board, if we would be agreeable to waive the fees that they would incur for going through another hearing again, then, again, that's, it's back on them whether they want to go through with all that, but at least have an understanding of where the board's at, which is, to me, as fair as I can be with the people involved. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with what Mr. Scala and Mr. Godamoller said. They're correct about most of this stuff, and all of it, what they said. I would be in favor of waiving the fees, because there was certainly a... If it wasn't misleading from our end, it was certainly misunderstood or misinterpreted by the petitioner that the R1 was the way to go. So I would certainly be in favor of waiving the fees. I think this is not prime farmland. I don't think it'd have a problem being approved at E5. And if there's any way we could do it administratively without having them... And if there's any way we could do it administratively without having them go back through, that would be fine too, but that doesn't seem to be the case here. So, but at the very least, we'd waive the fees. And I, I think that there would be a, a strong commitment from this board to approve that if it was, when it comes back from the ZBA as E5.
Mr. Curtis?
Again, good points, and I agree with everyone here, and I would like to see this passed in one way or another. So, with everything that's been said, is there a way to expedite this through the notices and everything and instead of having it months out or, what would the timeframe be?
Could you turn off your mic for a second?
I didn't know what's on, sorry.
Well, the state statute sets, gives us clear direction on noticing. So, we have to notice at least 15 days prior to the hearing. I think, what month are we in? April? I believe the ZBA is scheduled through May. But, we could probably double this one up with something that's already scheduled. So, we would need at least, at least the 15 days we have to do for the publishing.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see that, that it be moved forward as much as possible for, for these folks. The other thing is, 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 on the drawings with the one-acre lot, my understanding is E5 would be the whole 12 acres?
You could divide it.
That's, that's up to them.
I'm sorry, what was the answer to that?
If they come back with a petition for E5, then they could, could legally describe five acres of the 12.
And the question is, would they want to do it that way or was there reasoning? That's, that's the concern here. And so, what are the different options that they have to come back? Whether it be the one acre we can, correct? So, what would be the other options for lot size that they would have to come back? With the frontage and everything else included there?
So, the minimum would be five acres is what I'm hearing. Everybody's comfortable with that. So, they would have to get a new legal description for us to publish with a minimum of five acres. If they wanted to ask for the entire 12, they certainly can ask for that. But, just be reminded that, that could translate to more than one home site because they would have the right to subdivision to create another additional lot.
So-
So, potentially one more home.
Correct.
So, so now through all this, we've, we're adding cost to them because now they have to, now they have to change that. I totally object to that, and I don't know how we can do it. How we could do it Tuesday night and get this true. Is there any way because of the public notice problem? Joe, is that the one problem we have? Okay.
If I had one, I'd be glad to suggest it. I don't know any way we get around the notice provisions. It's a state statute, it's a state constitutional mandated, it's a due process issue. I don't believe a neighbor's gonna come and object, but if a neighbor came and objected, they could overturn it if you don't give notice.
Okay, I, okay, so I, I think I've said pretty clear what I think is that we should expediate this as, as quickly as possible for these folks. I know they're, they have a transaction waiting on this, on our approval. It's kind of been a screw-up somewhere along the line here with communication or how it was communicated to them in the beginning or how they understood it, whatever it means. And, and so, I just, I hate to see not being able to come up with some variance of some sort that they did not have to pay for re-survey and everything else. So, I'll let everybody else talk.
Ms. Ness?
So, I, I want to apologize to Mr. Shellhouse because this is difficult and so, and I also want to acknowledge that the staff is guided by statute and the zoning board, which can, it's challenging at best. I would like to see us find a way to not charge the, in-service-to-customer service, as this is a customer service function, Mr. Shellhouse, and move this forward in a way that will work for him and his family, whatever that looks like. You know, whatever the, however we're guided by what we're guided by. And I personally apologize to you for the confusion.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify with Renee. I, I think this has the best opportunity to pass ZBA and this county board. If it's understood that whatever they go for, the E5 on five acres or 12 acres, it's gonna be limited to one house on that 12 acres. So, what would be, it'd be E5 on 12 acres and the 12 acres, if we put E5 on the whole 12 acres, then there's the opportunity to subdivide it later or not?
That's correct. There is. And, and there's no conditioning, a map amendment. So, you couldn't place any condition on that.
So, it would be in their best interest for one house on the whole 12 acres to satisfy me, if nobody else, that, that would be the only house on that 12 acres, that they would do it on five acres and zone, and zone at E5. Is that correct?
Correct.
And there'd be a condition that they could not build on the other seven acres?
No conditions.
No condition.
You can't condition a rezoning.
Okay. And the other part's still zoned ag and unbuildable?
Correct.
I think that would be their best opportunity to get it passed ZBA and this board then.
Mr. Saager?
Yeah, I have a lot of problems with this because I think that we are, kind of get in this area of undue burden based upon pure bureaucracy. And I, I think that we're just skirting around the issue here. The issue is that the individual has a petition before us. It is a petition to rezone to R1. That's been published, it's been out there, it's been considered by the zoning board of appeals. It is up to this board now to make a decision. I think that too many times, we have to accept the fact that we have zoning laws, state laws, local ordinances, which do indeed sometimes just defy pure logic. I mean, you know, it's one thing to have those to provide us with standards, but I think that we, we don't need to defy logic here. As I heard people's comments, everybody's saying, "We want you to be able to build a house here." "We want you to be able to build one home and then you, in addition, become the steward." I mean, I think in public comments, we heard two predominant words that I think we need to consider here. The first is stewardship. We have an individual who is dedicated and committed to following the guidelines of the previous owners, which are to provide stewardship for this land that is, as we all know, an environmental benefit to the county and to the area. The second word that came out was precedent. And I, I'm gonna just share right now, and I'll share this multiple times over my tenure on this board if we need to, but this whole concept of precedent just defies logic to me. The reason is, we are responsible every single time a petition comes before this body to identify the inherent benefits or negatives about that petition which comes before us, regardless of what any other decisions have been made at any other point in history or in the future as far as that goes. We have a requirement to consider the petition that is before us and we make a decision based upon the merits of that petition only. That's our job and that's our responsibility. So, I don't buy into a lot of this precedent thing because there will be future requests that come before us that we're gonna have to, again, evaluate those on their own best merits. And I have a, a real, real problem for us to put additional burden. This young family has been working through the system, following the guidelines, doing everything, and now we're gonna say we've got to put it off for longer. And I think that it's getting into the building season. I don't know what their plans are, but if they're planning on getting started right away, then we're trying to hamper that, and I just think that that is distinctly wrong. I think we need to move forward with this. I think we need to give them an answer today, what this is going to be like on Tuesday night so that they can go ahead and they can sleep well at night. I, I think this is frankly, I mean, I appreciate all my colleagues, erudite discussion with regards to what the laws are, but we have an opportunity to provide that variation today and Tuesday night, and I support that.
Mr. Renner?
Thank you. Forgot what I was gonna say. No, I'm kidding. I, I think in this case, the, the, the ZBA, they, they just wanted to stay consistent. They probably wanted to give it to you, but they, they wanted to stay consistent and, and you just went the wrong route. We can stray, right? A couple of questions, one for you, Adam. You know, I think by looking at this, there's not enough road frontage to split it down the middle, right? It's not conducive to put a road in there. So, the chances of this getting, getting subdivided again into more lots are, are so obscure in my eyes. Am I wrong?
There's always an opportunity for it.
There's always, right?
With an easement or, you know, something along those lines. Shared driveways, et cetera. So, the, the opportunity is always there.
Yeah, which would require special approval, which they would never get.
Would it require? Yeah, yeah.
Same ever.
Would it require?
I, I think that the concern about setting a precedent isn't, and subdivision, isn't on this particular property, but on adjacent properties. So, all of this area, the future land use plan is either environmentally sensitive area or it is agriculture. So, from the zoning board of appeals perspective, if you change the map and you plonk down in that ag area, so you set aside your future land use designation and you change the map to your highest density, single-family residential zoning district, then you open the door to an adjacent property owner. Somebody comes in and they buy a 40-acre piece that's contiguous to this, then it becomes a question of how do you close the door? When the 40-acre piece comes in and says, "Our zoning is consistent. We have, we have R1 contiguous to us." So, that's, that's the idea of precedent that they were concerned about. Not this particular property, but adjacent properties developing at a higher density.
Okay, so, which leads me to ask, were any neighbors opposed to this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right, I don't think any neighbors were. And they were consistent with the R1 right across the street. I see you say no, and I know why you're saying that.
The zoning map is-
I know why you're saying that because everywhere else they touch, they aren't.
But, the future land use plan, it's not-
This is a real hard board to read, you know? I would say, I would give it to them because I don't see a use of abuse on that zoning in this case because I don't think the land is conducive for subdividing with the sensitive soils the way it is in the back there. But, I, this is a hard board to read. I don't know if you'd get 12. I might go with, you know, Mr. Scala and Mr. Goddimer, only because I can't, this is a really tough board to read. I would definitely give this, give this an approval. Well, yeah, 18 people getting to agree on one thing. In the, in the, in every meeting I've been to on this one, it's a hard one to read, so, you know? Yeah, yeah, so-
It's another issue.
It's another issue, but I, I personally would approve this.
Mr. Short?
Just a quick question to, the, the only risk with the R1 would be the potential of this precedent that surrounding properties would come and ask for the same thing.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and this variation that's being requested is only on one acre of the property?
It's a map amendment, yes, only on one acre of the 12.
Okay. I, 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 I'm of the opinion, keep it as simple as possible. If someone were to come to this board with an R1 change, asking for a quarter-acre lots or whatever it might be, I'd be against that. This is pretty simple, it's a one-acre lot, he wants to build a house. And as far as process and putting it through, yes, I agree with waiving the fees, but also there's lawyer fees involved and other additional processes that come into play. And I think Mr. Saager recommend, you know, referenced building. I would be in favor of approving this variation request.
Mr. Curtis?
Just to clarify, it's 10 votes, right, to pass this?
That's correct. Just a simple majority.
So, we, we get through all the mess for the, for the folks and everything else to make this exception? And I would agree with Mr. Saager then, and I would support it in the current form. Thank you. Just so you guys are counting.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm sorry to have to speak again, but as Renee said about the precedent-setting thing, and I know we have some people that aren't concerned about the precedent, but I've been involved in lawsuits through the zoning board, and it's not a fun site, it's not fun to do. And the non-consistency to the zoning regulations and setting a precedent are all things that leads to the lawsuit when the guy with the 40 acres next door comes in. So, it's just a consideration that might, that could be a possibility.
Mr. Scala?
Yeah, I just, I, I can't approve this the way it is, basically for the same reasons Larry said. I, I feel like, I, I agree 100% that it's not a good situation, but I do feel like as a board, we're trying to provide guidance and basically direction for a petitioner, which is, which is a lot more than what as a board we usually do. I mean, we usually just vote up or down and then they're, you know, they're left hanging. And I, and I think the compassion of all of us here recognize the situation, and so, we're trying to provide a way out so that they can get accomplished what they're trying to get accomplished, but in my eyes, not screw future boards. And that's, you know, I'm, I'm always looking to the future and, and, you know, Brian, I disagree with you a little bit. Our actions have consequences in the future. And so, I just, I feel that, yes, you have to look at every individual situation on its own merits, but our actions have ramifications in the future. And, you know, ideally, whether they come back with an A2, which is what I would prefer, which I know that's, has a, a new set of issues, or simply an E5 on five acres, which I'm fine with also, to me is the cleanest way. And it, it, for me, allows future boards to be able to make decisions going forward that, you know, they can make and we're not, I, I don't feel we're putting them in a bad position by doing what we're doing.
Ms. Bedhoff?
Yes, hello, and, you know, I think we all agree that we want you, Mr. Shellhouse, to be able to build your home there. And so, we, and I think you can see from the discussion that we, we're having on this that we're doing everything we can to make that happen for you. So, we're not insensitive to what you've had to go through. At the same time, I do think it's important that we follow the rules that are set before us. And I, I do agree that we should waive the fees, any fees that you have to pay to come before the ZBA again. But, I also agree with Mr. Scala, Mr. Smith, Mr. Goddimer, that this should be presented again. And I like either E3 or E5. You know, from my little knowledge of this, I think the thing that concerns me most is what could happen in the future to this property. We don't doubt your stewardship of this property, but none of us live forever. So, someone could come along later and have a totally different intent, and that could very well happen. So, I think it's best, and we should follow the rules, republish this and have another, you know, appearance before the board. Several members have indicated that they would vote for it. With those conditions, I certainly would. So, I wish you luck with this and I would like to see it happen for you. Thank you.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Ma'am, with the, the size of it is now, basically, I got the idea that majority of it, half of it, is unusable. We have the Duck Sanctuary, we have the- We have the duck sanctuary, we have the water rights that are there. So you couldn't actually build any more, you know, than one house on that property the way it stands now, right?
No, because they are only asking for the map amendment on the one acre, the minimum size.
I was referring to her down the future.
Well, they would have to come back, and that's what we're talking about precedent. Someone in the future say, I don't know, we decide we no longer want to maintain wetlands, and it's cool to build on them, then someone could come in with a petition for R1 for the remainder of the property. It would be, you would be really hard pressed to deny it because they have the consistency in zoning, and then they could subdivide the property.
But with the wetlands, you know, the way it is there, virtually, you're fighting City Hall to even try to change it the way the conservation's got it.
As it stands now, yes.
And I'm for that. I really, you know, like how they have it. I'm for letting them build this house. Kim, is it a pipe dream to say, "Hey, let's pull this, recommend what we should have on it, and get it back here to us, you know, for May's meeting?" Or is that cutting it way too tight? That's all I got.
Ms. Von Bergen?
Wouldn't we be setting precedents for anything that we think we want to change it to?
Correct.
That's my, that's my main question. I think it's really unfortunate that, you know, we're sitting here worrying about, you know, precedence when anything we do, it's going to set a precedence for something. I really think that, you know, we ought to let this family move forward, build their house. I would be the first person to not let them have this been prime farmland. It is not farmable, ever. You know, even for animals now with the wetland settings. I just, we need to let them move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Greenow?
Having lived through something like this and barely avoiding it, absolutely, they should get the vote on Tuesday night and move ahead.
Last one, Mr. Saager.
Yes, I appreciate your two points. I understand, and I've heard everything that people have said about precedent, not only this day, but so many times in the past. And I appreciate everything that is being raised, but I want to reiterate that it always is a tough decision. Anytime something comes in the future, it's going to be a tough decision. That's our job. Make those tough decisions that have to be made. And don't say that precedent is the reason we're making the decision. That's the lazy way out, is to say that we're founding everything on the basis of precedent. So I just really am concerned about that. Second thing is that in this instance, I understood that there was a comment that the individual might have an interest and would be willing to move forward to establish a conservation easement on the other portion of the property that would then provide protections for the rest of that 10 acres. And so I think that that's something that we also need to consider. And again, I'm going to reiterate that, to me, this defies logic. I think we need to move forward and provide this young family with the opportunity to have this passed on Tuesday night. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 17B211. Mr. Scala?
Hey, happy stuff. We're spending money. I just wanted to, real quick, give information for the full board. The chairman already talked about the ARPA grants and what took place. It was a very long discussion, and I think a very thorough discussion in regard to how to divvy up the money. Just for board members' information, the request for the projects came in at about $9 million. We only had $6 million plus to spend, so we were $3 million short on fulfilling the full amounts that the different capital projects had. So we tried to do our best, the committee did, to cut back on the request. Union was the only one that was fully funded. The rest of them all received haircuts to some extent. Just for the board's information, this is the conclusion of the original requests and all of the items that have come before finance. We have two items that we are holding money back for. One is MCEDC, which we are holding back currently a quarter of $1 million for their request. There has been committee members that are feeling that we should not have held that back, but a majority of the committee felt that we should. And then the other thing is, we're holding back $3 million currently for fiber for, you know, the rest of the county to try and get lit up. And until those projects come forward, which we believe will be summers around the end of the year, we're holding that money back, and if we don't need to spend it, then the committee has decided that first priority would be going back and giving the capital projects that were not fully funded the opportunity to get more money from whatever's left over.
These ones that are before us?
Yes, correct. And then the other thing that the committee will be doing is, all of the grants that we have awarded, we're going to start going through each of those and see how they're doing, meaning start evaluating how much money they've spent, if they feel like they will be spending all the money. The committee is definitely dedicated to not leaving a single dollar left that we could potentially have to give back to government, so we want to make sure we're prudent about making sure those funds get expended. And so we want to be following up with the programs that were already funded and see where they're at, and if they don't feel like they're going to spend all the money, then we may be coming back to the full board with modifications so that that money can be put back into the pool to be able to spend elsewhere. So that's just a brief update as to where we were and where we're going, and if there's any questions about the projects of the capital program that is before you now, myself or the committee can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Scala. Saying no further comments. Pete, you got a report for us today?
Yeah, real quick, Mike, just following up on your comment about, you know, following up on some of our earlier grantees, the Illinois Manufacturing Excellence Coalition, IMEC. You know, Mike and I, and Kerry Johnson and Kerry Weiss are going to be meeting with them virtually tomorrow just to kind of look at the pace of those dollars that they're leaving, because there is some concern that we're not on a pace to spend all those monies. So that's just an example of the kind of follow-up we're going to be doing. My notes, a month from today, May 11th, after your MayCal meeting, we are going to have an employee picnic, so hopefully we'll get done right around 11:35, and we can sashay out to the parking lot and have a hamburger or hot dog. But staff will be, the department heads, and you guys are welcome to serve employees' a little meal there. It's part of Employee Appreciation Week that week, and we did it last year, it was a real success, so looking forward to doing that again. In your mailbox in the other room, I placed the annual report from the MCEDC. It is a good report. I think it's a good summary of their activities. If you're wondering what they're working on, I urge you to take a look at it. Finally, had a couple references to Oaks today, both from the Historic Preservation Commission and, of course, discussion of Larson's property. So if you're interested in Oaks, at your May 2nd PED meeting, we've gotten confirmation that staff from the Illinois Department of Ag is going to be here, the experts on spongy moths. So we will have more discussions on spongy moths at the May 2nd PED meeting. That's all I got. Thanks.
All right. With that, entertaining motion to adjourn. Ms. Greenow, seconded by Mr. Scala, all in favor, say aye. Have a good day.